Good evening and welcome to the Azuleta Independent School District's meeting of the Board of Trustees. Whether you are here to address the board or to celebrate the accomplishments of those being honored here this evening, we appreciate that you have taken the time to join us. We invite you to share your comments with the board during the public comment portion of our meeting. The public comment sign-up card shows the rules for participating. Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into a discussion on the issue raised. We remind everyone that this is a board meeting often attended by students and ask that we all conduct ourselves in a manner that best represents the values and traditions of the Azuleta Independent School District. Please turn off or silence all cell phones, tablets, and other electronic devices, and thank you for your attendance. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:08 PM. We have a quorum with Carlos Bustillos, Richard Cudier, Zotero Romides, Cruz Ochoa, Catherine Lusetto, Mike Rosales, and myself, Connie Woodruff. Secretary Rosales, will you lead us in the pledges in a moment of silence? Dr. De La Torre, do you have introductions this evening?
Madam President, members of the board, we have several introductions. We've got two individuals who want to speak on behalf of candidates, applicants, for the Region 19 representative. Would the board like to entertain them now?
Yes.
At this time, then, I'd like to invite Sergio Coronado up to the dais to address the board. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Superintendent De La Torre, President Woodruff, members of the Board of Trustees of the Azuleta Independent School District, thank you for this opportunity. I come on behalf of Armando Rodriguez, a fellow Board of Trustee from Canutio Independent School District, and asking for your support and endorsement. He is running for reelection for the TASB, your TASB Board of Directors. You know, I know Armando personally very well. We are somehow, we are related. I am actually the culprit that got him involved in politics. And so, at a very young age, Armando was really the only student that would ever go up and request an agenda for the board meetings, even when he was in middle school. He has really involved, you know, his entire adult life in bettering education, both as a, when he first got elected, he was the youngest elected official in the county. He has since gone on and is now serving on various boards to include, obviously, TASB. He served as a president of the Mexican-American School Board Association of Texas. He currently serves on the National Board. You know, he's really involved himself, like I said, his entire adult life, really, to education. I'm asking for your support. He has already received the support of San Elizario Independent School District, Socorro Independent School District, Fort Hancock Independent School District, and his, obviously, his home district, Canutio Independent School District. Really, what can I say about him? That he serves on some very important committees at TASB, and one of those in particular is the Legislative Committee, was really, very, very important in the short time that he's been there. He's been able to serve on that committee. I'm asking for your support. I think that Armando has a very good opportunity to become a TASB president, which nobody from this region has served in at least for 21 years. I think last one was Mr. Subloski. So I'm asking as your support and endorsement of Armando Rodriguez, I think we need to have him continue his service, both to this region and to the state, and obviously, at the national level, which he's doing. Thank you, board.
Thank you very much. May I invite Sally Upchurch to the podium to address the Board of Trustees.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. De La Torre, and members of the board. My name is Sally Upchurch. I am a Board of Trustee member for the Torneo Independent School District, and I'd like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk about the endorsement of Marlene Bullard. As most of you are aware, she is a public educator. She believes in doing what is right and honest for children. Marlene is a strong advocate for public education and accepts every opportunity to represent our region and its school districts. Marlene believes in doing what is right for children and families. She is willing to have those difficult conversations when it means providing better opportunities for kids. We are confident she will represent the region well and bring more opportunities and recognition upon our school districts. Marlene isn't running for this position for her own gain. She is doing it in order to make sure all districts in the region have representation with TASB and across the state, just as she did with completing Leadership TASB and becoming a Master Trustee. Her participation and representation has pushed Torneo into the forefront many times recently. She will make sure to do what is right for the region as a whole. As Dr. De La Torre with Region 19 stated Saturday night at the Teacher of the Year banquet, "There is strength in numbers, and we must continue to build those relationships and form together, bring more in for our region." Marlene can help accomplish this. She will help us become more united as child advocates and servants to our region and communities. I truly hope you will give Marlene Bullard your consideration in this very important item and allow her to be a voice for our children in public schools by endorsing her as a candidate for the TASB Board of Directors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Upchurch. That concludes those that want to speak on that particular agenda topic.
Thank you. Secretary Rosales, do we have requests for citizens' input?
At this, you said, this time I would like to have Arlinda Valencia step forward, and she will speak on RAC.
Good evening, President Woodruff, Dr. De La Torre, and Board of Trustees. I'm Arlinda Valencia, president of the Azuleta Teachers Association, and I'm here tonight to speak to you about the Random Acts of Kindness program. I believe that the program is a great program. I agree with Mr. Rosales. In our day and time, we all can agree, what the world needs now is love. We also want our students to grow up and be kind and caring adults. But Dr. De La Torre asked Dr. Morgan a good question. How can we get buy-in for this program? Because contrary to what I heard on Monday night, teachers are not excited about this program. I met with 50 teachers last Saturday, and out of those 50, only five teachers were in favor of this program. The other 45 stated that it wasn't working, and after the presentation on Monday, I believe the problem is with the implementation. The implementation of the RAC, the implementation of a RAC lesson takes 30 minutes to prepare, 30 minutes to deliver, and then students must create a product, and teachers must display the work. Teachers are also required to have students create a student-based project after every RAC unit. Dr. Kennedy said it herself. Teachers teach the lessons, they create activities, they have presentations, and celebrations. Martha Garcia stated, "The program comes with four units, with four lessons in each of them, which makes it 16 lessons in all. Each lesson includes a service product." Now, I ask this board, does this program sound like a 30-minute program per week? In addition, principals and counselors place a lot of pressure on teachers by coming in and checking their work. If they don't like it, teachers have to redo it. I have a huge problem with the demands on our teachers with this program. Let me put it this way. Teachers are not feeling any acts of kindness. They are being overburdened. While trying to do the RAC program, they are also having to implement all the other YIS initiatives. Dr. Morgan stated that everything, that everyone is doing it differently. That means that there is no consistency. He stated that counselors get a two-day training, and then they go back and teach their staff for two to three hours. In reality, teachers in many schools aren't being trained at all. They're told to go to the website and download the lessons. Look, all I'm asking this board to do is to please make this program less cumbersome. Let's teachers integrate RAC into their daily lessons. Teachers shouldn't have to solve all of society's problems. Teachers should focus on academics. I'm not asking this board to do away with RAC, but I am asking you to please reevaluate this program to where it helps our students with their social, emotional learning, but without it being a burden on the backs of our teachers. Thank you.
The Order of Business shall be set out in this posted agenda unless changed by consensus of the board. During the board workshop, Trustee Romides will abstain and pull consent item number nine for a separate motion. Are there any other items you'd like to pull off the consent or policy agenda for a separate vote? Thank you. The agenda will be considered the consensus of the board. Dr. De La Torre, do you have a report for the board?
President Woodruff, members of the board, guests, at this time, I'd like to turn over the program to Ms. Patricia Ayala, our Chief Communications Officer, who will assist me with a very, very special presentation this evening.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. De La Torre. Will you please come to the front of the dais for this special presentation? Ladies and gentlemen, this special recognition goes to a cohesive, high-performing leadership team, our Board of Trustees, recognized and honored this weekend by Region 19 for winning the 2017-2018 Regional Honor Board Award. Superintendent De La Torre nominated our trustees for this prestigious award in honor of their excellence, dedication, and ethics in their service to public education. From day one, this board has helped form and supported the district's vision to provide an engaging, innovative, and rigorous educational experience for all our students in order to prepare them for the world that awaits them upon graduation. It is only through your steadfast support, guidance, and integrity that we have been able to achieve a remarkable transformation of the district. Thank you for your leadership, your loyalty, and, most importantly, your service. The district wishes you the very best of luck as you compete against other regional winners for the Texas Honor Board this fall. Ladies and gentlemen, please give a big round of applause to our trustees of the 2017-2018 Regional Honor Board. Here to present each trustee with special plaques on behalf of Superintendent De La Torre are members of this executive cabinet. At this time, we'd like to take a photograph with the executive cabinet and our Board of Trustees. At this, at this time, we would like the trustees to stay for one more photo by themselves, please. Thank you, cabinet. Let's hear it one more time for our amazing Board of Trustees. Trustees, you may return to the dais. At this time, I'd like to turn over the program to Dr. De La Torre, who will continue with the superintendent's update. Thank you.
Just a few brief comments earlier this morning, and I think it was last Sunday night at some ungodly hour, I think it was at 10:40 or something, on KVIA Extra, when they asked, you know, what's important and what's special about the Azuleta Independent School District this year. And I said, you know, "A lot of people don't realize that the current governing board has done some things that are unprecedented." I said, "To begin with, they were certainly involved in the capital improvement plan." I said, "They were recently nominated and named the Region 19 Honor Board of the Year." For two successive years, this school board has reduced the property tax rate. That's never happened anywhere in El Paso County at any time in history. And so, they're a very, very special group, and they're the reason that myself and And so, they're a very, very special group, and they're the reason that myself and members of my cabinet have had an opportunity to be ambitious and aggressive and bold and go after things that we think are important for kids that most school districts have never had an opportunity to pursue, because we can't pursue anything without their permission. They represent the people, they represent the students, so everything that's happened over the last three, four years that's good for kids in this school district is because they've allowed us the latitude and the liberty to be a little bit bold and audacious and pursue things. And then, we've all agreed that there's reciprocity, and that's called accountability. If we're given permission to do certain things, then there are certain expectations, and I've got a great team of people that work with me, they've got a great team of instructional leaders, principals, assistant principals, leadership teams that deliver, they're the boots on the ground. But it all starts with a high-performing cohesive group of trustees that I think the community has become very, very proud of, and more importantly, the community trusts. And that's absolutely significant if we want to continue and reimagine and reinvent this school district, because we're going to go out to them probably at some point in the future, and I think they've delivered exactly what they've promised their community. So, with all that said, on behalf of Cabinet, all of the principals and the leaders in all of our schools who appreciate you greatly, very deserving of being an Honor Board, we think you're an Honor Board every year, but congratulations. In addition to that, if there are no comments, or we can do it at the end, this is the second year in a row that our Public Relations Department has won eight national awards for their exceptional work in branding, promoting their videos, their graphics. The Isleta Independent School District is corporate. In this city, we won awards from the National School Public Relations Association because we don't give the work to a high-priced firm from outside the city of El Paso. We don't rely on Los Angeles, Austin, Dallas, Fort Worth to promote this district. We rely on two things. One, we rely on the things that happen in the four corners of the classroom to promote this school district. We rely on what happens on the athletic field, in the visual and performing arts, and we rely on Patty Ayala, our Chief Communications Officer, and her team to make sure that people know all of the terrific things that are happening in our schools and in our districts. So, congratulations to Patty, Patricia, sorry, and her team for having elevated this school district at the national level and earned all of those awards on our behalf. Thank you very much. First, say you're welcome, because summer's coming to an end, but it didn't come to an end as quickly as it came to an end in other school districts, right? And I heard that all morning, because as of last week, we were with other superintendents. This Tuesday, August 21st, it's really become, we call it the convocation, but it's really become sort of our annual State of the District address. We get a chance to celebrate, acknowledge, embrace all of the achievements, all of the accomplishments that we've enjoyed, although we've worked very, very hard for them. On Tuesday, and the one thing that we do different than all the other school districts is we want to share that with every single employee in the district. And it's not cheap, and we get a lot of help, endorsements, we get it underwritten for the most part, but we want to pull in every department across this district and help them understand that they are critical to our success. They're part of our mission, and they have worked hard and they deserve to be with all of us, and they're just important as all of us, we just have different roles and responsibilities. This event is particularly significant because it allows us to reconnect, inform, reimagine, get excited about what it means to be part of the district, which will be central and important to the message this year. It motivates, inspires staff and teachers, and gets them ready for another successful year. This will be the fifth year, and that happens, it starts on Monday, August 27th, and I can tell you, we're fired up. We're ready to go. After TEA released the statistics today, the results, we're a B district, but we're only a B district for about a year, right? First time ever. We'll make some adjustments, and we will dedicate ourselves to do everything it takes to be an A district, because our parents and their students and our community deserve a great option and opportunity for their children, and that is central to our mission. That's why we're here, we're not here to be marginal or mediocre or average. So, we look forward to that. The following day, on Wednesday, August 22nd, at 4:30, we will hold one of our first special ribbon-cutting ceremonies for the long-awaited Thomas Manor Elementary School. Beautiful school. On time, under budget, the quality that our students, our parents, our staff, that neighborhood deserves and needs to be successful will be celebrated. I'm just making it up as I go, I don't even have reading glasses, that's... Oh, I'm off. It really is an opportunity to embrace and celebrate what the Gutierrez brothers, who by the way, born and raised El Paso, went to the Riverside High School Learning Community, had a unique opportunity to design something, to give something back, and who have not disappointed. It is a beautiful, beautiful elementary school. I invite all of you to be there that evening to cut that ribbon and then tour that school, because I'm certain that school is going to receive a great deal of attention and a lot of awards and recognitions for the design. It's a beautiful design, so we'll see you next Tuesday. Lastly, I'd like to take a few moments to introduce new principals, central office administrators, who fit our profile, our DNA, and who will lead very important departments or schools throughout the district. They may or may not be here, if they're not here, it's because they're working hard. School is opening in 10 days. They told me they don't have time for this nonsense. They told me not to say that, so that slipped out, but they said they don't have time for this nonsense, so I'm going to introduce them anyway. Isleta Preque, Ms. Lisa Lopez will be leading that faculty and staff, a new experience, a new challenge, she's going to be terrific. Capistrano Elementary School, Mr. Chris Puga. Del Valle Elementary School, Ms. Sandra Perez, formerly at Valley View Middle School, looking to get back to Big Red. We've got Alex Armandaris, and they're all excited to have him back. He'll be reunited with Charlie Garcia, the energy will be off the roof. Sageland Elementary School, Rachel Blair. South Loop, Ms. Norma Myers will take responsibility for that school as principal. And then, the consolidation of Camino Real Middle School, Valley View Middle School, very few people could pull this off, but Ms. Ira Perales will be principal at both campuses, but one school, Del Valle Middle School, will ascend this fall. And if you haven't met him yet, he's a little bit like Charlie Garcia, he's ready to go, he's fired up, he's got a new administrative team. The Hanks High School Learning Community is excited to welcome Enrique Herrera, who's taken the leadership role as principal. And then, here at the central office, Guidance and Counseling, Selena Munoz. So, we are proud to welcome all of these leaders to their new campuses and/or departments, look forward to their knowledge, expertise, other abilities, skills, and that Isleta DNA, that Isleta profile that has made us the district. And that concludes with my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Delatorre. Trustee Lucetto, do you have a report for the board?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I wanted to thank my fellow board members for supporting my efforts to join this year's Leadership Tazby class. I was able to obtain a scholarship from Tazby, I would like to thank, I would like to encourage my fellow board members to consider the Leadership Tazby in the future, as well as to apply for a scholarship. I was able to obtain a scholarship, and so that'll help ease some of the burden for this on the district. So, thank you again for your support.
I just want to say, thank you for doing this, because I think you are helping to keep our board at the very top by doing this, and we just appreciate the time and energy that you're going to have to put into this, and thank you. We will now open the public hearing as a... We will now open the public hearing. As a taxing entity, the district is required to provide an annual forum for the public to provide input on the district's 2018-19 proposed tax rate. FY 2018-19, per TEC 44.004, the Board of Trustees must hold a public hearing to discuss and set the district's tax rate on an annual basis. The notice of the public hearing to discuss the tax rate was published in the El Paso Times on August 5th, 2018. This is the hearing for that purpose. The Board of Trustees appreciates your attendance and welcomes your input during the public hearing. Please observe the following rules. Individuals wishing to speak are limited to three minutes. If you're not signed up to speak, sign in to speak... Okay, I'm sorry. If you have not signed up on the sign-in sheet to speak, please do so at this time. It's located by the table, by the entry, over where Ms. Austin is at. If you're a part of a group of more than five people, please select a spokesperson to speak for the group. And at this time, we would like Ms. Leeper to do a little presentation for us.
Good evening, President Woodruff, members of the board, and Dr. Delatorre. I'm Lindley Leeper, and I do have a very short presentation for you in response to questions raised by the board at the workshop on Monday evening. As you may know, the Texas Property Tax Code requires that the Central Appraisal District reappraise property every three years, and our particular CAD chooses to do that in every even-numbered year. They can change that, but generally speaking, they stick to that premise. In terms of our entire district, for the first time, this reappraisal resulted in an increase above the $6 billion mark for property within our district. It was a $286 million property increase within the district. Of that amount, 40% was new construction, $118 million worth of new construction took place in the district. So, a large part of that increase is a result of the new construction, and then the remainder is a result of the reappraisal of the properties existing within the boundaries of the district. And so, just to give you a little bit more granular view, we took from each of the school districts, we took their property tax rate, and we standardized the home value at $125,000. Difficult to compare if we're using the average home value in each one, so we standardized it at $125,000. As you well know, residents within the Isleta district have an additional 20% homestead exemption, and that's optional, it's only applied in our district by approval of the voters and the board. That results for Isleta residents in a reduction of their property value from $125,000 to $100,000, right off the bat. Then, there's a statewide exemption of $25,000, which every district gets. So, if we're comparing EPISD and SISD on a $125,000 home, we get to a taxable home value for those two districts of $100,000 compared to our taxable value of 75. Now, this current year, we're proposing a tax rate that is, again, a half a cent less than last year. Last year, it was $1.46, we're asking for $1.45. That would result in a tax bill for our residents of $1,091, compared to $1,381 for residents of Socorro and $1,310 for residents of EPISD. So, you can see that additional optional homestead exemption provides a great benefit to the residents of the district. Now, as I mentioned, because property tax values increased, regardless of what we do with the tax rate, we couldn't lower it enough to offset the impact to the taxpayer. No matter what, with that increase in values, they're going to pay more in taxes, and this is just a snapshot of what the impact will be based on your particular tax rate or the tax rate you'll consider later on in the agenda. And then, at the bottom of the slide, I've given you just the average single-family dwelling value, the actual from CAD's values for this year, so you can see that in EPISD, the home value average is $142,000, SISD is $136,000 compared to a $110,000 home in Isleta. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much.
I just want to thank you for the way that you presented these numbers. They make a lot of sense, and it's something that I feel that more people ought to be in tune to, at least if we have an opportunity, as we go along with people in the public.
I know it's not a, you know, we're not pursuing a bond or anything like that, but it wouldn't hurt to just send out a postcard mailer from the district just to remind them that as they start thinking about their property taxes and how much of it's going to the schools, to bring some clarity to the conversation, to the narrative, because I think it's lost sometimes. I was at, in that conference on Sunday night with KVIA Extra, and I think the impression the public got was that, gosh, you know, the Isleta Independent School District has that $1.45, $1.46 property tax rate, and it's easy to forget or dismiss that 20% homestead exemption that obviously makes a huge difference. We're looking at probably, for a $125,000 home, it appears to be a $300 discrepancy in terms of what homeowners in Socorro and in EPISD pay annually, but if you look at the numbers, it would lead one to believe that somehow we're asking more from our homeowners, and that certainly isn't the case.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
At this time, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
At this point, Chairman, there isn't, at least I've not received any names. Thank you.
The order, the agenda has been approved. May I have an electronic... Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. I'm having a night, I think. President, thank you for that, so now, we're going to close the public hearing. The order, the agenda has been approved. May I have an electronic motion and a second on the remaining consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by administration?
Is that showing here?
Can't get it to move.
I didn't move it.
Catherine did.
Is it working now?
There it is. Oh, we're good.
Okay, we have, go ahead and read your motion, please.
I move to approve the remaining consent agenda item listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration.
We have a second by Mr. Cudair. Mr. Remedes is not able to cast his vote.
I can take your vote, sir, if you'd like.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
That's approved, six to zero.
We didn't vote.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, seven to zero.
Sorry, yeah. So, we'll move to the poll consent agenda item, and that's the approval of award of YSD contract number 20190014 with El Paso Community College District. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve award of YSD contract number 2019014 memorandum of agreement with the El Paso County Community College District to provide an emergency medical technician EMT program during the period of September 1st, 2018, to August 31st, 2019, renewable annually in the amount of $58,774. August 31, 2019, renewable annually in the amount of $58,774 from local funds contingent upon the final negotiations and in-house council review.
We have a second from Mr. Cudier.
President Woodruff, I'm having some type of problems this evening. Would you have the record reflect that I abstained from this vote?
That's approved, six to zero and with one abstention.
There you go.
Okay, moving on to the policy action items. The order, the agenda has been approved. May I have an electronic motion and a second on the policy action items listed on this agenda as recommended by administration?
Madam President, I move to approve the remaining policy action agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration.
Okay, and we have a second by Mr. Rosales. And again, still no.
President Woodruff, would you, I have the record reflect that I voted yes on this.
Okay, thank you.
And that's approved, seven to zero. Okay. Moving on to our action items, we'll start with action item number one, endorsement for the Tasby Board of Directors, Region 19. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, may I have a motion?
Somebody has to move.
Yeah, go ahead and, go ahead and read your motion.
Chairman, I move to approve an endorsement of trustee Armando Rodriguez to fill the Region 19 position on the Tasby Board of Directors.
We have a second by Catherine Lucetta and...
Madam Chair, would you have the record reflect that I voted yes on this motion?
And that's approved, seven to zero. Moving on to number two, action item, order accepting certified tax rule 2018-19. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, may I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve an order accepting the tax rule as certified by the 2018 Appraisal Review Board and certified by the chief appraiser as recommended by the administration.
We have a second by Mr. Rosales.
President Woodruff, would you have the record reflect that I voted yes on this issue?
That's approved, seven to zero. Moving on to action item number three, order setting tax rate for 2018-19. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? There's no further discussion, may I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve an order setting the 2018-2019 tax rate, including separate components for maintenance and operations of $1.17 and debt service of 28.5 cents for a total of $1.45, $1.455 per $100 of valuation as recommended by administration.
We have a second by Mr. Ochoa.
President Woodruff, would you please have the record reflect that I voted yes on this issue?
Sir, that is approved, seven to zero. Action item number four, ratification of amendment number five, twice the contract number 20160323 with WRA Architects. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, may we have a motion?
Madam President, I move to ratify a ward of amendment number five to YSD contract number 20160323 with WRA Architects for the Parkland Middle School addition and renovation project in the amount of $4,367.72 from bond funds and contingent upon on 1295 certificate of interested parties as recommended by administration.
We have a second by Mr. Rosales.
President Woodruff, would you have the record reflect that I voted yes on this issue?
Thank you, Mr. Remedes. And that passes, seven to zero. Okay, we're, action item number five, ratification of award of change order number two to YSD contract number 20180081 with AO General Contractor, Inc. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, may I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to ratify a ward of change order number two to YSD contract 20180081 with AO General Contractor Incorporated to increase the fee by an amount of $1,045 and to change the substantial completion date from February 15, 2018 to June 27, 2018 for the Camino Real Middle School Portable Classroom Installation Project from local funds as recommended by administration.
We have a second by Mr. Ochoa.
President Woodruff, would you have the record reflect that I voted yes on this issue?
That's approved, seven to zero. We are at action item number six, naming of Riverside High School Gymnasium. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion?
Charlie.
Go ahead and press your speaker button. No, the one on the board.
Where?
There you go.
Okay. Just wanted to say a couple of words of Jim Forbes. He was my, he was my coach. Jim Forbes began his basketball career as a standout player at El Paso's Baller High School, where he became a high school All-American in 1970. He was recruited to UTEP and became a two-time All-American, All-Western Athletic Conference performer, 1972 and 1974, under the legendary Nate Smith Hall of Fame coach, Don Haskins. In 1972, Jim Forbes was an integral part member of the United States US Olympic Basketball Team coached by Don Haskins and Hall of Fame coach, Henry Alba. Coach Forbes brought his vision and commitment to the Riverside campus in the summer of 1984. With a smaller talent pool and minimal resources, he educated, inspired a varsity boys' basketball team that for the next 20 years would compete, would compile a 317 to 273 record and multiple Texas state playoff appearances. In 1995, he led the Rangers to their first regional championship and earned the first state Final Four appearance in school history. In 2017, Jim Forbes was awarded the College Education Gold Nugget Award from, awarded from the University of Texas at El Paso. So, then I go ahead and say...
I don't think, does anybody else want to speak? Okay, may I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve and propose naming of the Riverside High School Gymnasium to James R. Forbes Gymnasium as submitted by Riverside CEIC as recommended by administration.
We have a second by Mr. Cudier.
President Woodruff, would you have the record reflect I voted yes on this issue?
Yes.
It does.
And that's approved, seven to zero. Okay, moving on to number seven, naming of Riverside High School Football Field. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? Mr. Bustillos.
Yes, I want to also give Coach Work his accolades. He was my coach for four years. Had an amazing experience with him. Riverside head football coach, let's see where, okay. Riverside head football coach and El Paso Athletic Hall of Fame inductee, Tom Work. Tom Work accomplished include, accomplishments included extraordinary coaching record of 134 wins and 38 losses in 15 years as a head coach of the Riverside Rangers, coupled with nine district championships, six of those consecutive, 10 by district championships, eight of those consecutive, four perfect regular seasons and 46 consecutive district wins from 2000 to 2006. During his tenure, he won two consecutive area championships, making Riverside the first El Paso team to accomplish this major milestone. Madam President, we can move it.
Go ahead.
Doesn't come up.
See him working.
Oh, there it is. Madam President, I move to approve or oppose, approve the...
Approve, not oppose.
No, 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 approve, propose naming of Riverside High School Football Field to Tom Work Riverfront Stadium as submitted by Riverside CEIC as recommended by administration.
We have a second by Mr. Rosales.
President Woodruff, would you please have the record reflect I voted yes on this issue?
Thank you, Mr. Remedes. And that passes, seven to zero. Okay, action item number eight, naming of Riverside High School Baseball Field. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion?
One more. Madam President, I'd like to say a little bit about Coach Jimmy Melendez. I got to, he coached me as a, in football. I never got to coach, I never got coached by baseball, but definitely got some football out of him. But I did talk to a lot of my classmates and former classmates. Jim Melendez began his head coaching career at Riverside High School in 1985. Under the leadership of Riverside, he amassed 749 victories, 28 Texas state playoff appearances in 32 years. As head coach, under Coach Melendez, Riverside won 17 district titles in 19 years, 12 by district championships, eight area championships, the most in El Paso, and eight regional quarterfinals, the most in El Paso. In 2000, the Rangers earned district, by district, area, and regional champion championships and advanced to the state, Texas State, for a, for a Final Four. His first time in school history for the Riverside baseball program. His commitment to education has earned him El Paso Coach of the Year five times, in 2001, El Paso Baseball Hall of Fame inductee, and 2013, El Paso Athletic Hall of Fame inductee.
If there's no more discussion, may I have a motion?
Madam President, I, I move to approve the proposed naming of Riverside High School Baseball Field to Jim Melendez Field at the yard, submitted by Riverside CEIC as recommended by administration.
We have a second by Mr. Ochoa.
President Woodruff, would you have the record reflect that I voted yes on this issue?
And that's approved, seven to zero. The Board of Trustees has determined that a closed meeting of the Board of Trustees is required to discuss the items set forth in the posted agenda for the state. Such closed meeting is authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, including but not limited to the sections and purposes covered by the following section of the Texas Government Code, 551.071, 72, 73, 74, 76, 82, 821, 83, and 84. Should any final action, decision, or vote be required with regard to any matter considered in closed session, the final action, decision, or vote shall be in the open meeting or at a subsequent public meeting with notice. The board will now move to the Rio Grand Room for closed session at 7:03 PM. The Board will now move to the Rio Grande Room for closed session at 7:03 PM.
I reconvene this meeting at 8:48 with the following present. Carlos Bustillos, Richard Cudier, Sotero Medes, Cruz Ochoa, Katherine Luceto, Mike Rosales, and myself, Connie Woodruff. Our first action item, number one, consider and take possible action regarding options for resolution of litigation in Jamison versus YSD, cause number 2017 DCV 2616. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If not, may I have a motion?
President Woodruff, I move that the board authorize the administration to resolve this matter as discussed in closed session.
We have a second by Mr. Cudier, and that's approved seven to zero. Action item number two, possible action regarding contract with Urban Associates for Bel Air Middle School. May I have a motion? Since there are no motion, that will die. Action item number three, possible action regarding contract with VLK Associates for 2015 Bond Program Management. May I have a motion? Since we have no motion on that, that will die. If there's no further discussion, may I have a motion to adjourn? Yes, sir.
I move to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.